The blessings you could give us as a city. We thank you for the dedicated employees that we have. Without them, we would not be the great city that we are. We ask you to give this deliberation our fullest attention, and let us do the best that we can for the employees that we appreciate so much. These are all the blessings we ask in our name. Amen.
Welcome to an office city council public hearing for the proposed operating in capital improvement program budget and for the community development block grant annual plan for this year July 1, 2017 through June 30 of 2018. To address the council, you should have registered your name, address, and subject with the clerk. Speakers are permitted to speak for three minutes, and you're asked to limit your remarks to the subject under discussion. If your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Written statements and other supportive material should be given to the clerk. The procedure we will follow tonight is I will call one name and then call the second name. The first person will come to the podium, and the second person will take the seat that's reserved. Again, you have three minutes. Please be respectful of everyone's time, and thank you for being here. First, we'd like to invite Dr. Melinda Boone and/or Chairman Rodney Jordan to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Alexander, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Manager Smith. About a month ago, Mayor Alexander and I had breakfast with the leader of the Greater Norfolk Corporation to discuss the work that's been done on our comprehensive technical education high school and how our collaboration may advance the effort forward. Prior to delving into the CTE discussion, we had a casual conversation about field trips and exposure to opportunities and other students Mayor Alexander had as a student matriculated through Norfolk Public Schools in the 1970s and 1980s, and how important those same teaching and learning opportunities are for our children today. The fact is, in the 1970s and through the 1980s, through bold and innovative leadership and frankly in a response to decades of civilian arrests, Mayor Alexander, Councilmember Johnson, McCullough, and I, all children of the 70s and 80s, were all beneficiaries of a community committed to the ideal and implementation of a public education system, where one's zip code truly did not determine one's access to a quality education. Many citizens serving as city council members, school board members, civic business and PTA leaders at the time, and more, were determined to provide us with proudly diverse living and learning experiences. Councilman Riddick even being willing to file lawsuits, so many of us treasure these opportunities today. Despite the closure of opportunity and academic gaps by gender, economic background, and what we call race from that success of the 70s and 80s, some of the techniques and approaches implemented during that time did not share the cost, the work, and sometimes the burden equitably, and the country began to retreat from our success. Norfolk became one of the first cities in our country to lead that retreat. We did however find a period of success in the late 1990s into the mid 2000s as we found ourselves with a stable school board, joined with a visionary superintendent, and a council willing to provide that governance team breathing room to teach and to educate our children. Today, as we emerge from the Great Recession, almost two decades of high stakes testing, a retreat from public education at the federal level, and lack of full funding for public education at the state level, we find ourselves at another generational crossroad. As one of the top fiscally stressed cities in the Commonwealth, Norfolk found the wherewithal to invest mightily in many parts of our city. We have traditionally urban design neighborhoods like that in East Beach. Many of our families and children can walk to museums, opera houses, and ODU villages. And thanks to school and city leaders, the zip code does not limit many of our students to an access to a quality education, to a quality and proudly diverse education. But you know, the true elephant in the room is large numbers of our children and families still waiting for their turn for inclusion in the great new Norfolk. The budget the school board presented for your consideration lays that foundation for grooming tomorrow's free lunch kid mayor. It is crafted by a modern visionary superintendent, mentored by the success of the early 2000s, and forged in one of the most diverse school divisions and equity striving Commonwealths, that of Massachusetts, whom we as a school board brought back home. It provides a basis for increasing choice options for our parents. It begins to correct compensation advancement opportunities for MPS staff stymied during the Great Recession. It moves us away from a neighborhood to school to prison pipeline while strengthening the school to career one. And it begins to restore the division to structural balance while so much uncertainty lies ahead at the state and federal levels. Yet there's so much more we need, but every journey begins with a first step. Interim Manager Smith stated in his budget presentation that this council asked him to be bold. "I see on this day is before me the most proudly diverse group of policymakers this city has known." So on behalf of children and families in Norfolk already choosing public education, and those who would like to join them, please, I ask you to be bold. Demonstrate that Norfolk can invest in its children and those who teach them as Norfolk has invested in its buildings and roads and transportation system in so much of our city. No matter the ward, no matter the gender, no matter the generation, you can lead us, choosing to fully fund this school board request today as we develop the sustainable formula Manager Smith described in his presentation to you. I know we are all thankful for the opportunities we have as public servants to ensure those who come behind us are better off than we. Let's not pull up the ladder of opportunity generations provided to us. Let's expand it so more may grab a wrong and reach new heights. Thank you.
Mayor Alexander, members of council, Mr. Smith, good evening. I'm Melinda Boone, the very proud superintendent of Norfolk Public Schools. Two weeks ago, I spoke with council regarding the technical details and assumptions employed in the development of the FY18 budget and educational plan that was submitted to the school board. The school board spent four weeks vetting that document and making adjustments and hearing from the public. The interim city manager's budget submitted to council on April 11th includes level funding at the FY17 level for MPS, thus not addressing any other requests for funds to address implementation of Phase 1 of the pay and comp study for all employee groups, restoration of in-school suspension, additional gifted teachers, restoration of gifted teachers, as well as addressing structural imbalances within the budget. Please note that the school board budget was not submitted without having addressed structural imbalances that are under our control. And yet, I must say how disappointed I am and disheartened I am that despite the transparency that we're bringing forwards with this administration and the factual basis of which we built the budget, that our needs were not addressed in this budget that the city manager presented. One of the ongoing questions is, what are you going to do to improve the achievement in schools for students in Norfolk Public Schools? We're doing that. I said to this council in March of 2016, just a few months after our arrival, that it was not going to be about bells, whistles, balloons, and banners, that it was going to be about rolling up our sleeves and getting back to the basics of what had driven us to success in the early 2000s, early to mid 2000s. I need to dismantle what had become a series of practices, of programs, of promises that were not delivered on for a variety of reasons. And so, as I have worked with all in the district, we have developed our focus, our improvement strategy around three particular areas: leadership, literacy, and rigor. What are the details in those three areas? One of the hallmarks of Norfolk's success was utilizing data to drive instructional decisions and to support the instructional practices in the classroom. Principal meetings have no long moved away from being management meetings where we talk about bus schedules or lunch schedules, but rather where we would dive deeply into the data to be able to make informed decisions about the best practices we need to employ in the classroom. And so noticing that that is where we haven't been in my ongoing conversations and very regular conversations with principals. This is what we're focusing on. How do we get back to principals being able to be principals by focusing on instructional leadership, by us taking operational efficiencies so that we can stop doing, have them stop doing other things that impact? So we are focused on leadership through the professional development that addresses instruction. We're also focused on how do we build our next cadre of leaders? We have a very veteran core of leaders in this community, and they have done great work. But not everyone is going to be in their seats forever. And therefore, how do we prepare the next group of strong leaders? We have initiated a cohort of new instructional leadership development known as our P3 program, again tapping into aspiring administrators and assistant principals and others who are already in the district to prepare them to take the helm of the work that's going forward. When we address literacy, one of the things we know is that a child must be able to read to find success. We have a reading challenge in Norfolk Public Schools. We have moved toward the development of a literacy plan that will address the attainment of on-grade level reading proficiency by third grade if not sooner, but with the idea that once students are reading on grade level, they can then learn to read to learn the content and be successful and not having to struggle with how to read in middle school and in high school and master content at the same time. Our literacy plan is returning to a focus on best practices in reading and writing instruction, going back to the balanced literacy approach that was touted many years ago in the National Reading Panel, Reading Council's panel of work on literacy. It is important that we structure the time within the instructional period for literacy such that we have the whole group lesson development, we have the time for individual support, and we have the enrichment and the centers to go along with that for success. We are working to reestablish an effective literacy block and at the same time support the literacy needs of students who are now beyond third grade and struggling with reading. Built within this and a framework of all of this is the rigor. You will very seldom hear me talk to anyone about test scores. I recognize that our accountability standard is around how well we do on the state's assessments. But that is not an indication of learning. Learning is indicative to the, and linked to the rigor that we put in place for students in terms of how we teach and how it readies them for the next level of the work going forward and the next grade levels and the next content. So that's what we're doing. It's not fancy. It's not something that you want to... I'm not one of those superintendents that's going to put it on the side of a building and say we have some cute name for it with no results. I'm a results-focused. We look forward to sharing more with the community in terms of this framework. But it's also note that this is built on the idea of improving outcomes for all students, not just certain students, but all of our students. Students who are not reading on grade level, gifted students who may not yet be reaching their fullest potential, for our students with disabilities and our English language learners. The school board accountability plan creates the framework by which we will measure our progress, engage our success, and go beyond SOLs. This is why we are asking for the budget that we are seeking. It is not about ballooning any part of the district because in the budget that I presented to the school board and was finally adopted, we reduced 60 positions to deal with declining enrollment. We come to the table recognizing we have to be partners in this work, and there are things that we have to do. We presented a budget showing our willingness and our will and the courageousness to do some things within the district. We just ask now that you take this journey with us. Thank you.
The next two speakers are April Harrington and Jackie Brown. Will you please come? Yes, we can have, we can provide the microphone for you if you need assistance.
Hello, my name is April Harrington, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Independent Center of Norfolk. I would just like to say a few things about the Independent Center. It's, I've been a member of the Independent Center since 2006. It's always been like a second home to me. It's helped me create long-lasting friendships with people as well as helping me feel like I can be a part of the community as a person with a disability. I think the biggest, the biggest obstacle people with disabilities go through in this community is, on a daily basis, you feel like there's not anybody like you. So, you know, the Independent Center, it allows you to see people with disabilities working there and accomplishing things, and also they invite you in and they help you feel like you're important. They offer lots of different workshops, like the Mix and Mingle. They have independent living workshops, the women's group, you know, where us women can get together and talk about, you know, our issues or our struggles that we go through as women with disabilities and just women, period, you know. Also, they have the men's group and everything. It's just a great facility altogether. They helped me find my apartment that I moved into in 2008. They assisted me in issues that I've had with social security. They assisted me with helping me find employment and also when I had discrimination issues in finding employment. So that's just how I feel about the Independent Center. It's just a great place for people with disabilities, and hopefully you guys will keep funding them. Thank you.
Jackie Brown and Travis Webb.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jaclyn Brown. In 1998, I had, unfortunately, had a car accident, and it left me paralyzed from my chest down. And actually, I was living in New York at the time, but my accident happened here in Virginia. So from then, I had gained a lot of my strength back, a lot of everything that I needed by Woodrow Wilson Rehabilitator Center. In 2012, I found the Independent Center, and they offered a job placement, being a receptionist, and, you know, so I thought I would go ahead and make a move. I don't want to be in a house or, you know, I couldn't do things that I used to do. So when I entered there, it was like the best job ever. They hired me because of my disability, not only because of my disability. And what the focus was that she, Ms. Cheryl Simpson, wanted someone to sit at the front desk with a disability so when people come in with disabilities, they can kind of see that there's nothing that they couldn't do. And with the Independent Center, that's what we do. We welcome in people with disabilities who have no idea that there's other options, other doors opening that people with disabilities can open up to. We have, like Abel said, we have different workshops that people could come in, like ILS is independent living support groups where they support each other and giving information about the community so it helps the disability community. And people would pass by and always would see our place and didn't know exactly what it was until they came in and they gained so much information about what we do. We do housing placements far as people with disabilities can find accessible housing. They also do, we can place training and put people out, people with disabilities out and show them a better life, you know what I mean? And that's what they do, and we're just proud, I'm just proud to work there. And everybody there that works at the Independent Center has some type of disability. So when people come in, they don't feel so like alone anymore or things that they can't do. They can do it. And the Independent Center is a great place that to work for, even to come in. People get to know each other. Like she said, we have a group come in once a month called Mix and Mingle. They come in with their snacks and music, and they dance and they enjoy each other. And we also have different activities, Movie Monday. They come in, we show a movie, not only with people with disabilities. We try to show movies that's empowerment with people with disabilities. And they come, and we have discussions afterwards, and which I do have a point with that. Does that mean I'm talking trouble? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, anyway, thank you for funding Independent Center, and thank you guys for listening. Bye-bye.
Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, my name is Travis Webb. I'm a peer mentor in the Independent Center. I've been there six years. But I wasn't born with my disability. I was gunned down back in 2001, trying to go into surgery. So I've been in my wheelchair since 2001. But through the years, it was a struggle for me. I was down on my parents, my family, and it gave me through. I was in and out of the nursing home from 2002 until 2007. And it was a struggle being in a nursing home as a young man. So when I was in school, I was going to Norfolk State. So as I was going to Norfolk State, one of the peer mentors from the Independent Center had came in. And then the social worker at the nursing home at the time, she was mentioning that, "Do you still want to transition back out to the community?" And I was like, "Yes, sure, why not?" So as I started working with the Independent Center, they helped me transition out from the nursing home back in 2009 and to my own place. And I've been there ever since. But back in 2011, the Independent Center had called me and offered me a job because they liked my story, how I didn't let nothing stop me, and I kept striving for greatness. So back in 2011, they just, they offered to give me the job. So I've been a peer mentor for six years. I helped, our main goal was to transition people from nursing homes back into the community, the ones that don't need to really be there. So out of my, I've been there six years, I've probably transitioned by like almost 100 people out of the nursing home. So... So we also, we also help with transportation, like hand to ride, you know, hand to ride services for people with disabilities to get places to their doctor's department, to like social events, things like that, you know. And like Independent Center is a great place for everyone to go with disability. There's a lot of resources there. We also work with other agencies to help people with disability live independently, you know. But I work at the Independent Center, and I do, I do like, I do a majority of the groups. I mean, I do Mix and Mingle. It's like a big social event that a lot of, a lot of people that come there. Everybody that comes to our center have a disability. So when people come there, it's like a big social event. They get to eat, play games, like a big, I mean, like a big social event, listen to music. And I also do like the support group. The support group is, they come in and we talk about different issues amongst each other. Whatever we talk about between us in a group room, between us, we don't go and share nobody's business, you know. So and it's just, it's just a great place to be, you know. I've been there six years, and I learned a lot. I'm also on the stakeboard enrichment. I go every three months. So we try to pick everybody, so... So I'm on the stakeboard in, I mean, in enrichment. I go every three months. My next time I go will be in June. So and I just want y'all to keep funding us, and, you know, thank you all for your time.
So Thomas Calhoun and Marilyn Blackwood, will you please come? Thomas Calhoun to the podium. Barry, Marilyn Blackwood, if you would, take a seat. Miss Blackwood, please, Mr. Calhoun is before you. You, you, yeah, you're waiting. All right. All right, thank you.
Mayor Frame, City Council. My name is Mayor, sorry. I hope he's not watching. My name is Thomas Calhoun, President of Norfolk Federation of Teachers. Two weeks ago, Mayor, I was in the City Council chamber and watched a meeting, work session you all had, where you summoned the superintendent. Never seen a meeting like that, Mayor. You all asked questions, made comments, and I sat and watched. I heard a councilperson say that, "When we gonna close some schools?" They were ready to close some schools. And I wondered if that's any school, or if that's just some schools. I heard another councilperson say, "Well, you know what? This may not be the school board that we want, but it's the one we have, so, you know, we ought to work with them." Well, I was glad to hear that one, Mayor, because, you know, that's what we feel about you guys. It may not be the council we want, but we gonna work with you because you there. So I appreciate that point of view made by that councilperson. Then, Mayor, the meeting kind of ended session with you making some statements that really hurt my feelings, sir. Said you didn't have $10 million, you didn't have two, and you won't go put no taxes in your budget. I felt like a beggar who, you know, you all just slammed the door in my face, told me to get off the porch. I wonder what the world is going on here? You know, several members of the City Council and School Board, we helped delay. That's not why. So it appears to be something missing between you all and the school board. I am so disappointed. Because I thought we had a great mayor, great city council, and I think we got a great school board, and I love the superintendent. I've never seen a superintendent of schools call down before you all and treat... I've never seen a superintendent of schools call down before you all and treat it like y'all did at that work session, never. I wondered if you would have done it if she was a man. But it wasn't right. It wasn't right what you all did. We worked for you all because we believed in you, and I still do. I don't know what happened at that meeting, I hope I'll never see it again. But we need you guys to work with the school board because it's about our children. We need you all to work together. I don't know what's between you guys, but I sure hope you fix it. 'Cause that was an ugly meeting, Mayor, and it hurt my feelings, for real.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, City Council members. My name is Marilyn Blackwood. I reside at 333 East Evans Street in this great city of Norfolk. I am also a proud Norfolk Public School Counselor. And I am here tonight to talk to you about funding our budget. If you click on the MPS website at any given time, you will find the words that say that they are on a mission to ensure that all students develop skills for lifelong learning and become successful contributors to a global society. Today, I would like to impress upon you the impact that counselors make on this mission. In order to fulfill the MPS mission, students need to know that their circumstances does not determine their destiny. And unfortunately, sometimes with the budget, they begin to feel like this. School counselors empower students to become productive individuals through academic, social, emotional, college and career counseling services, yes, but it goes much deeper than that. School counselors are able to meet students right at the level of need. By building relationship with students, teachers, administrators, parents, and community members, counselors are quickly able to respond to either one child or an entire school at a moment's notice with resources and support. Counselors ensure that students have someone in their lives who will be there, who will be on their team no matter what, who pushes them when they won't push themselves, who support them when there's no support, who refuse to give up on them no matter how many mistakes they make, someone with unwavering belief in their potential. That's the kind of impact that counselors make. Every hour that we spend walking through struggles, every anger management strategy that we give, every coat we distribute, every listening ear, every recommendation letter, every college visit organized, every college application, fast perform, and every ounce of self-esteem that we bolster, we make an impact. It cannot be denied that counselors tackle a great deal of issues. We go from mental health issues to family crisis to course planning, disciplinary issue, and even truancy. Some of us are even school nurses. We play the school nurse when the school nurse isn't there. And we do this and we take this challenge on daily. And so today, while considering the budget, I just want you not to see dollar signs, but to see students. I don't even want you to see students, I want you to see children, our children, because they are the ones that's going to help shape Norfolk in the future. Children who are expected to focus when they're worried about the next meal, there should be a counselor to help with that. Children who are expected to learn when they're worried about the gunshots at night and hoping that going to college is going to get them away from that, they should know that there's a counselor to help with that. The student who are presented as disruptive and cannot focus, they're unable to focus, there should be a counselor to help with that. The student who's at risk for suicide or dropout should know that there's a counselor for them. We should know that no matter what, from the depths of our heart, that somebody cares other than just the person they see in front of them. They are the ones to shape society. When you get to be a little older, maybe my age, some of you, you'll understand that they are the ones that will be taking care of you one way or the other. I urge you to fund, fully fund our budget and more than anything, make sure that every counselor is adequately, every school is adequately covered with a counselor. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Nancy Estepa and I am the proud math specialist at PB Young Elementary School in Norfolk. I've been teaching in Norfolk since 2009. Shortly after I started teaching for Norfolk, the step increases were frozen due to the recession. For many years after that, they remained frozen. At this point in May, I will have multiple graduate degrees and many years in, and I will be paid little more than a first-year teacher. The Norfolk School Board was concerned about teachers like me, so this year, they completed a pay study. The findings of the study showed that a large number of our teachers are in a similar situation as myself. Seventy-three percent of our teachers are getting paid less than expected based on their years of service. Seventy-three percent of our teachers could transfer to a neighboring city and get paid thousands more and in many cases, have a lighter workload. The study concluded that the district would need 25 million to make up the difference in salary for teachers like me and to pay all of Norfolk's teachers based on their experience. Norfolk is not an easy district to work in. The teachers who stay in this district do so because they want to make a difference in children's lives. Through the years, I have watched countless hard-working, dedicated teachers and leaders who love the kids in Norfolk transfer to other districts. Not because they want less of a workload, not because they can't handle our students, not because our kids often start school behind. They leave because having a big heart doesn't pay the bills. Feeling good about making a difference does not pay the bills. I have plenty of arguments with my husband about why I choose to care so much about a district that doesn't care about me. I try to tell him that it's not my school district. My school district is given an amount of money to work with than we budget. The thing is, we are not given enough money to start with. The average, the average teacher works 50 to 60 hours per week. This is not just Norfolk teacher hours, this is an average for teachers nationally. However, we only get paid for 36.65 of those hours. Unlike almost any other profession, we are not compensated for overtime. I know how amazing our children are and how amazing our district could be if we could retain quality teachers and continue to develop excellent leadership. You may say we can afford to keep, we can't afford to keep great teachers, but Norfolk City Council, can we really afford to lose them? City Council, I am asking for you to vote to fully fund Norfolk Schools, Norfolk Public Schools' budget. Show us that you value education as an investment in our city's future.
Good evening, I'm Betty Baughan. I'm a math specialist, as was Nancy who just spoke. And thank you for the opportunity to listen to us tonight. I am gonna ask of you what I ask of my teachers and what I ask of my students, and that is to reflect, to reflect on your work and on what your work shows and on the message that, that our budget, that our city budget is gonna be reflecting to three important populations. Our teachers are one of, are one of them, but I want to start with our kids. And I want to start with our youngest children who we are here to give a voice to, and those are the little people in our budget. So what message will they get every day? How will they be challenged? How will their teachers challenge them? Making sure that we have qualified teachers in our classrooms is so important and our students certainly deserve the best every day. Second, our moms and dads in our district, especially the single moms that I see kissing their children as they get on the bus and as they enter the front door of that building and often saying, be good, you know, I want you to have a green day, I want you to, you know, learn, but most often, be good. And so believing that just by that, by our, they're giving us their best, they want their children to do their best, and so that's gonna carry through to success for them every day in their classroom. And so the message that you are sending with your budget also affects our teachers. And we are here to make professional decisions minute by minute in the classroom with our students, and we want to support each other with that. We want to have colleagues together who are equally qualified, that we can grow together. So it's very important that we are sending the message to our current teachers and our teachers who we need to come to Norfolk because we are really in a shortage and we need high-quality teachers, especially in our poverty areas of our city. So please consider the message that you're sending for prospective professionals who will choose to come to Norfolk and who will choose to be a part of our district so that we can continue to, to grow and to become better. Because I think a lot of us are here realizing this is just, this is not good enough, this is not okay, and we want, we, we want to get to another level. So how can we support each other to get to another level? Thank you so much.
So when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address so we can have a recording. The next two persons who signed to speak is Gary Sigler and Cheryl Lacy.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander. City Council members and Mr. Smith. My name is Gary Sigler. I work at 7928 Hampton Boulevard, which is a Norfolk Public School. I'm also here to tell you, ask for your continued support for Norfolk Public School teachers. And because you're all very busy professionals, I wanted you to know some of the things that school counselors do. School counselors work as liaisons with military partners in education and adopt to school partners. School counselors also sponsor membership, I'm sorry, mentorship programs like the Lunch Buddy Program with Spa War. School counselors work to help keep kids in school through the Norfolk Courts Initiative, which was founded by Judge Joseph Massey. School counselors also facilitate community service programs for middle school students like the Be a Reader Public-Pprivate Partnership with Norfolk Academy. School counselors work with the Armed Services YMCA to provide a free Operation Hero After-School Homework Help Support Group. We also help students with applications to the outstanding middle school specialty programs offered by Norfolk Public Schools. On a daily basis, school counselors run deployment groups, test-taking skills groups, study skills groups, friendships groups, behavior groups, and we see individual parents and students as needed. Occasionally, a counselor will assist in the main office when the principal or assistant principal are engaged with other matters. School counselors also help parents and students with academic and career planning to make our students college and career-ready. Finally, we ask for your continued support for Norfolk Public Schools, and we thank you for that support in the past. Counselors do make a difference and counselors count.
Mayor Alexander, City Council members, good evening. My name is Cheryl Lacy and I reside at 605 Resch Court in Chesapeake, and I'm a proud Norfolk teacher of 20 years. I come to you tonight disappointed, disappointed that every year I come to Granby to beg you to support our children. I come here to remind you to make them first. I come here to try to make you understand that if our children and our teachers don't come first, we all lose. Teachers are leaving en masse every year because frankly, at times like this, it's an embarrassment to be a teacher in Norfolk. Why do we always find ourselves asking you to think of our children? You just finished building a multimillion-dollar hotel, The Main. While it is beautiful, why did it come first? You're building an outlet mall. While people will shop there, why did it come first? You're remodeling Waterside for the umpteenth time again. Why did it come first? You must realize that these things are your priorities, will not bring you what you're looking for. The people that go to these venues will return to their homes in neighboring cities and even neighboring states. They aren't Norfolk residents, they're here for those attractions. You're doing this all wrong. What people want is strong schools. That's the way to keep people moving to Norfolk. Strengthen our schools, put our children first. What you've proposed is a Band-Aid, a temporary fix of a permanent problem. Our schools, maintaining the staff and the facilities and serving our students should be of the highest priority. Can you for once do the right thing and put our children first?
Timothy Jones and Louis Jordan, please come. Thank you, welcome. Please state your name and your address.
Timothy Jones, 752 Hunter Square in Chesapeake, Norfolk teacher from Norview High School.
Welcome.
Welcome, yeah, thank you. Good evening, City Council men and women, citizens and distinguished guests. It has come to my attention that Norfolk Public Schools and the Norfolk School Board is asking for $10 million to complete its budget for 2018. To most everybody out here in the audience, that's a huge sum of money. This is actually only 0.8% of your total budget. And that would bring the total spent on education from 27.4% to 28.2%. Norfolk's closest competitors spend and invest a much higher percentage on their budget for education. Virginia Beach is spending 39.8% of its budget on education, and Chesapeake is spending 48%. Immediately, this is putting one of your top priorities in jeopardy and is doing what is one of the core services to provide education that a city government is supposed to do. Putting that fact aside, there are a few other reasons that City Council should expand their contribution to the MPS budget. One, every other major city is giving raises to their full-time employees. Number two, teachers deserve step increases denoting their experience. And number three, it keeps benefits for employees competitive with others in the region. First, the issue of raises. Every city on the South Side is giving a raise to their school employees in this budget year. Unemployment is on the continual downward trend in Norfolk. The revenue base for the city has continued to grow, including projected increases in sales tax revenue and also an increase in property values which are boosting property tax revenue. Without the extra, wait, excuse me, without the extra funds, this raise will probably be off the table for us. If we cannot expect a raise now, when are we going to expect a raise? We're at the top end of the business cycle, ladies and gentlemen. All right. As a conservative estimate, teachers spend an extra 20 to 30 hours beyond their contract time, and this is not something that any old profession can say, that they get paid for work, or so they're not getting paid for most of the work that they do. Second, the current budget from the School Board is attempting to unfreeze steps for its employees. There are several stories of teachers who have been with the school system for over a decade and they're only on step five or six. I have not been able to ascertain even how the system truly works for it from any teacher because it's applied so haphazardly that nobody in the city can tell me. This is not the case from the other major districts in the area. Those districts may start at a lower salary than Norfolk, but I would be interested to see how the median pay of a teacher who has five or 10 years of experience stacks up to a Norfolk teacher with the same level of experience. Being a teacher is hard enough without having to worry about whether we will get the pay that we are due based on our experience level. I fear this will not survive the budget cuts necessary with the 10 million, with the 10 million the School Board is asking for. One, one second. All right. Finally, in anticipation of rising health costs, Norfolk Public Schools is choosing wisely to try and fund the extra health cost and not make that have to be paid by the staff of MPS. Without the $10 million in extra funding, it's going to affect us by lowering our net pay. The other problems with this is it makes Norfolk's public schools less competitive in the market. Teachers like other professions understand and respond to incentives. The students in Norfolk deserve the best, but you need to be willing to retain the best. As a state, as you state in your budget proposal, education is an investment in our future. I hope that you decide to increase your investment as school, as the school board has requested. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Louis Jordan. I live at fifteen thirty-two East Ocean View Avenue. Uh, I'm here today to respectfully request you fully fund the school board budget for next year. I'm a Norfolk native and went to public schools before the decades that were even mentioned by Mr. Jordan. So I hope that that doesn't count, doesn't count against me. But I have a daughter, believe it or not, that's a freshman at Granby High School. Four years ago, we decided to transfer from private school to Blair Middle School, seeking better education, particularly in math and science. And we're generally pleased. But the longer I was there, the more concerned I grew about the apparent lack of accountability and how the system was performing, how money was being spent, and what programs were being funded. Uh, there seemed to be no measurable goals and objectives other than the scores on the SOLs, and that concerned me. So I decided to get involved. For the last two years, I have participated actively in the Gifted Education Advisory Committee and currently Vice Chairman. Uh, and I'd like to give you some good news. Uh, we feel like there is some progress. Uh, we are now getting much more data about student performance that we've been requesting. And we're working with several school board members to develop measurable outcomes so we can evaluate the success or failure of particular programs. Uh, we're encouraged by the school board's new willingness to focus on holding the administration accountable for how it spends its available funds and how well the students are doing. Decades ago, I was the city's first parking administrator and did that for eleven years, and later was Waste Management Superintendent for five years. I have over thirty-five years in public employment experience now. And I know how the budget game works. Uh, remember when I used to be asked to give budget reductions and examples of what we'd have to cut to meet budget goals? Well, every year I'd offer up a clean community campaign. Not that it wasn't a great program, but I knew it was politically popular and wouldn't get cut. If you do not fully fund the school board budget for this year, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be the administration that gets cut. It's gonna be the gifted resource teachers and other instructional resources our kids so badly need. Continuing to shrink the numbers of teachers, teaching assistants and programs is not the way to restore our school's reputation. Virtually all of your campaign, all of you campaign on improving our school system. Sadly to say, what we perceive, many of us in public, to be the long-term decline of the school system, has occurred under the leadership of council-appointed, appointed school board. We're asking you to walk the talk now. Please fully fund the school board requests, and I promise that the parents and students and others interested in the community will work to hold the school board and administration responsible for how those funds, funds are spent and how successful the program is. Thank you.
Doc Richardson and Joshua Stone. Please come forward, state your name and your address.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Doc Richardson. I live at one seven two four Kingston Avenue. In twenty sixteen, after graduating from college at a four-year institution with a BA, my average debt would be about thirty-seven thousand dollars. If I went to the private sector, my average yearly income would be fifty thousand dollars. If I were to become a teacher in this area, I have the following options. Virginia Beach, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Chesapeake, forty-two-hundred, four hundred dollars. In Norfolk, where I live and pay taxes, my salary would be thirty-nine thousand dollars, twenty sixteen MPS website. In addition, I would pay on the average for a two-bedroom apartment, eleven thousand a month. To work in a city where the poverty level is twelve thousand dollars, sixteen point nine percent of the population lives below the poverty level, and the per capita income is seventeen thousand, I ask members of the council, does your current budget address our poverty level and our low per capita income? According to best practices and research, education is the key. Specifically, a highly educated workforce would raise our per capita income and reduce our poverty level. Therefore, I ask you, fully fund Norfolk Public School budget so that we can move forward into the next century, knowing we have given our children and citizens the skills to enter a global economy.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Joshua Stone. I'm the, uh, new band director at Norview High School. I've been teaching in Norfolk for about six years. Um, I'd like to start off by saying that I do appreciate the, uh, the work you have done to better our city.
What is your address, sir?
Sorry, eighty-seven one eight Tidewater Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, I do want to start off by saying I appreciate the, uh, work that you have done to increase business in our area. There have been a lot of things to improve our city. Uh, before I start with what I actually have written, I did see Mayor Alexander, you were looking through the brochure after one of my, uh, colleagues at Norview was mentioning the twenty-seven percent of our budget that goes to Norfolk, because I believe there is some confusion as far as what is printed in the brochure with the pie chart, the dollar sign, and, uh, and the fact that it says thirty-seven percent. The reason that there's a discrepancy there is because, uh, included in our general fund is the money that's already appropriated by the state and the federal level. So when you take that out, you end up with what the city actually puts into our budget, which is an extremely much lower number. I noticed this a couple of years ago, uh, but I'm not a financial analyst, so I wanted to make sure I was correct. Uh, moving on, uh, I believe all of you would agree that MPS is a top priority focusing on our students and improving schools. Uh, and to quote Mr. Smigle at one of the meetings, um, he said he's, he's not saying it's a bad budget. Uh, it's just at some point, education has got to be. When we say we are committed to it as a priority, then we have to show that in our budget. Uh, Mr. Smigle says, and as quoted by the superintendent, that half of the district's request is for teacher compensation and the other half is for, uh, in-school suspensions, reinstitution of positions. Uh, we're talking about money that directly goes to two major issues we're facing in our schools. Uh, creating an atmosphere of discipline while keeping our students in school and making sure Norfolk is able to retain the best teachers. The school board is listening to what we have said. We need you to do the same. Whether anyone agrees or disagrees with Dr. Boone's decisions on what to cut from the school budget, the point is that she shouldn't have to be making that decision. Not when so many of you have claimed education is a top priority. Now, thanks so much of your hard work. We have a thriving downtown, new courthouses, hotels, and outlet stores. Uh, the jobs and areas are being, the, the jobs and the areas that are being talked about having cutbacks and MPS, uh, will not might, they will affect the change of Norfolk, sorry, the image of Norfolk Public Schools and the city of Norfolk. The music, art, and gifted students are the public relations for MPS. And it starts from the elementary students, from the marching bands dedicating their evenings and weekends to promote the city and parades and other functions, the art students artwork being displayed at various venues, the artwork of our own teachers being displayed at the Hermitage Museum. What the Nighthawks program is designed to do, keep kids off the streets and give them training, is exactly what we've been doing for decades. We work hard to recruit students for our programs, and it starts at the elementary level. With the support we need from you, programs like the Nighthawks wouldn't need to exist. The approach of offering services to high-crime areas is a great step, but this needs to be addressed from both angles. Help those who are already out of school and possibly on the wrong track, but help us prevent them from ever getting to that point. Every day I educate students who may be considered at risk, and I can't get them to leave my band room. That's the effect the arts has on students. It's amazing what a safe environment, discipline, fun, and respect that goes both ways does for these students. They work hard. And a budget like this is proposed, it makes us all wonder where your priorities truly lie. I understand these decisions are laboring, they're intensive and difficult, and that you will never make everyone happy. But it is your job to ensure that the priorities you've set are apparent, transparent, and truly your priority. Thank you.
John Williams and Danielle Robey.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, city council, I'm here to talk about the budget and providing for Norfolk School the money they're asking for. Mr. Mayor, when you was running for mayor, we went out and we worked really hard to get you in. And we worked hard, cold rain, everything to get you in on your word, because we took your word as value. And on your issues on your website when you was running for mayor, you said that, "Education, an excellent school system is essential to many of our goals. Our schools must be safe, nurturing places for where our children, teachers can score." I am also running for mayor because we need to strengthen that and expand our middle class in Norfolk. One of the best ways we can do that is through our public school system. An excellent school system is essential not only to prepare our children to succeed, but to make sure Norfolk is able to create, attract, and grow businesses that offer good-paying jobs in a wide range of fields. Mr. Mayor, and, and Richmond, during the meetings of the mayor, and when you were still the state senator running for mayor, you said, "As we look at growing our economy, an educated, highly-trained, highly-skilled workforce is going to be essential." On your community engagement, you said, "Listening would be a hallmark of my tenure as mayor." So I want you to listen what I'm saying. You know, we vote because we believe, and voting is a power tool. We all citizens, we vote because we believe. We vote on people's word, and we trust the word that the people say. So when we're trusting your word, when you talk about the education, when we're trusting your word, we trusting that you look out for our children because our children is our future. And if we don't have highly-trained, educated children to go out into the workforce, and we don't have nothing, and I stand behind my teachers, I stand behind every citizen in Norfolk. Our vote is powerful. I stand behind them. And I'm not asking for nothing more than for the city council and your word as mayor that you ran on, your word on education, that you keep your word, you support my superintendent, which is one of the best superintendents Norfolk have seen. I, I love my superintendent. I love my school board. And, and for them to do their job, they need every last one of y'all's support. So on end of this, uh, Mayor Sessom said, "We cannot let the quality of our schools go down one bit because it's our calling card. My babies, my, my babies is all the kids in Norfolk. They're my babies. They, they is our calling card. They is my future. And if you ain't gonna support them, then we lost."
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, Vice Mayor Dr. Wibley, and members of the Norfolk City Council, Mr. Smith. My name is Danielle Robey and I live at six three four five Tuttle Avenue in Norfolk. I'm a proud product of the district, a parent of MPS graduates, and have devoted twenty-nine years of my career to MPS as a music educator and most recently senior coordinator of music. I'm speaking this evening regarding the impact of reduction in the school budget and the effect on our elementary music and art programs. Simply stated, the reduction of positions in art, music, and PE will cause students to lose instructional time in those areas and not be provided the current level of services which are aligned to the SOLs. Our K-four students have music once a week for forty-five minutes. Once a week for forty-five minutes. It is a small amount of time, but we must protect it. Because for most of our students, this is the only music experience they get. In fifth grade, the students choose between chorus and strings, and we begin band at the sixth grade level. Our elementary art, music, and PE teachers serve the entire school population, including those children with disabilities and the gifted learner. Our music and art teachers are all assigned to home school. In larger schools, we send in staff from those schools with a smaller number of classes to make sure all students are provided with art and music equitably. This travel also involves our elementary strings teachers who have between five and six schools each. You have witnessed the strolling silver strings, the all-city jazz band, high school marching bands, choral and orchestra groups who represent us when we want to showcase the best of the city. People who have the means to send their children elsewhere sometimes stay with us because of the arts program. It begins in the elementary music program. I believe in music for music's sake, yet realize that data speaks for us when people are focused on how we serve the students in other academic areas. A recent study showed secondary music students in Norfolk Public Schools scored on average fifteen to twenty percent higher on SOL tests, SATs, and AP involvement than their peers who did not take music. A very large percentage of our students who achieve at high levels and who flock to our specialty programs in the middle schools are also music students. This budget will also impact our ability to continue the many extra things the department provides for our most talented students, such as all-city elementary strings, chorus and recorder, middle school and high school all-city band, orchestra, and choral groups, including the tattoo at Scope, which our high school all-city chorus has done three out of the past four years. All of the ensembles I mentioned take place after our music teachers' contracted day. In October, will serve as the host for the National Urban Music Leadership Conference. Norfolk was selected based on our strong history of quality programs. We're recognized nationally. We need to continue to support us locally. In respect to the board and superintendent, it is no easy task to facilitate the depth and breadth required through the various disciplines on such an austere budget. Please remember to consider these elementary teachers who serve our students every day as part of what drives the success of our students in school and in life. Thank you very much for your time.
Catherine Simmons and Philip Hawkins.
Good evening, Catherine Simmons. I reside at one oh four Afton Avenue. U.S. News and World Report annually publishes numerous best-of rankings across diverse topics, including best colleges, best diets, best hospitals, and best cities. In my years of perusing these tabulations, never among the entries in the best jobs list was the position of school counselor. My four children have attended Norfolk Public Schools over a span of fourteen years, and we interacted with many school counselors and saw the height and breadth and width and length of what they routinely do for students, teachers, parents, and administrators where they work. Based upon what I observed, I confidently say that I understand why this career never broke into the top one hundred. The tangible returns appear marginal. The expectations from multiple sources sometimes approach unreasonable status. The outcomes are as unpredictable as human behavior. Unless individuals personally interested in the well-being of a particular student interact with school counselors, I don't believe they recognize the value and impact of the position. I had the opportunity to see this in the lives of my own children, as well as in the life of a bright neighborhood teen who had decided he didn't care anymore. He just wanted to get out of school. He was failing a He just wanted to get out of school, he was failing essential courses, and he would not graduate without intervention. His father was during his teen years somewhat disconnected from his life. His older brother was a high school dropout and his mother died when he was young. The head counselor at his high school was the person I approached on his behalf, seeking to see if intervention was even possible. Through the actions of the head counselor and the students' counselor, working as a team and collaborating with teachers and administrators, this young man walked in his graduation. He's now in the military with a high school diploma in his name. Without a school counselor's willingness to add to the already overfilled schedule, all school counselors seem to maintain, this capable student with what he perceived as insurmountable challenges would not have graduated. The counselors in NPS who have touched, taught, reached, saved, encouraged, helped, and developed my children have ceaselessly displayed hopeful attitudes as strong, courageous, approachable leader builders. They have candidly and compassionately sought to empower my children. They have listened to and directed them, addressed my concerns with openness, fostered camaraderie and team support among counselor colleagues, and respectfully considered how they may best serve those in authority. Through the years, my children's counselors offered insights and alternatives suited to each child's temperament, personality, and stated goals, reflecting understanding and consideration of the importance of affirming uniqueness and individual needs in the midst of a very diverse and sometimes very large school system. Please consider the priceless, invisible, intangible, instilled value of school counselors and seek areas other than our schools for budgetary adjustments. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, Vice Mayor Dr. Whibley, City Manager Smith, and members of the Norfolk City Council. Good evening. My name is Philip Hawkins, Jr., and I reside at 3597 Mississippi Avenue in the Ingleside Community. I am a 20-year veteran educator in early childhood with Norfolk Public Schools. I currently teach at PB Young Senior Elementary School in downtown. I heard my friends speaking tonight. I'm so proud of all of the people in the room for their passion. I'm also a lifelong resident and a product of Norfolk Public Schools and an active citizen in our city. I'm a proud leader of the Education Association of Norfolk, also the Virginia Education Association, and also the National Education Association. And tonight, while I'm not officially speaking on their behalf, I do speak for our children and I speak in standing solidarity with my colleagues here tonight. Tonight, I am here to ask the Norfolk City Council to respectfully reconsider what we heard last week. I was very disappointed when I read on the news or heard on the news that our children are not worth it through the outcome of we cannot find $10 million. When we have looked at the past decisions of the city councils, this current council, and previous councils, we have seen that this council and previous councils have found money for things that they value important to be important. So why is it that we cannot find the value in our children who are going to be the future leaders of our city and our world? If we are going to see change happen, we have to make those bold decisions. I'm reading a lot of words in this booklet and it looks like it's just reprinted from year to year. I looked at last year's booklet as well, and I'm just not understanding why we feel like the funding level needs to stay the same when our world is changing. The world changed last year when we elected a new president. And we see education is at the heart of the attack when we look at the national scene and everything is trickling down to the local level. But if we do not educate and focus on our children's future welfare, we will not have a future that we can be proud of and a legacy that we will be able to leave them. And I want you to think about what legacy are you going to leave as an elected official? Because many of you, as we've already heard tonight, we all ran on campaigns of excellence in education. We're going to have a priority of increasing funding for public schools, more visibility for Norfolk, making more productive options for our children. But when it's time to sit at the table, we can't find money, but we can find money for tax incentives for businesses and individuals to come in and build up Norfolk, but we won't have a citizen base to support it. I look at the housing. Without house, without education, there is no housing. You won't have a job. So when we look at everything else in this book, it all goes back to the center focus, our education hub, Norfolk Public Schools. What legacy are you going to leave our children? Thank you.
Roy Martin and Ed Lazar.
Good evening. I think everybody left, so I'm not sure if I'm going to have anything important to say. But my name is Roy Martin. I reside at 1043 Algonquin Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'm here on board half of the board trustees for Norfolk Public Library. As I do each year, I want to thank you for all the support that you've given us. We're a nationally acclaimed, nationally recognized, and nationally sought-after library. It's a pretty unique thing in this day and age. What I want to share with you is just kind of a personal story. As a young boy with a hearing impairment, hearing loss if you will, the libraries were where I went as a sanctuary to kind of retreat. We didn't have the technology that we have today to be able to detect and also interact in the world as a hearing loss individual. So when I was a young boy, going into the library was where I could satisfy my curiosity for knowledge. Recently, I was able to take my grandmother, who's 94-years-old, and my son, who's nine, to the library. All three of us, three generations. Between the three of us, we probably had just about every single bit of technology that's encountered in this world in the last century taken care of. We went into a beautiful building, thanks to you. We encountered wonderful books and collections, thanks to you. But what made it key were the people that we encountered along the way, the personnel, from the people who opened the door for my grandmother, who helped us up the stairs, to help my son find that book of obscure subject I can't even remember, but, you know, nine-year-olds, they have some pretty interesting and curious thoughts. Right on to me, where we went up to the Slover Libraries Digital Media Lab to see Chip and Dale, the two 3D printers, to get Keys to the City made out of little plastic there, to have that engaging relationship and my grandmother making a crack about how she doesn't even know what a computer is. And I have to remind her each time, it was her generation that made the computer happen. So what does all this mean? Why am I rambling on about it? It's because the bricks and mortars that you have provided us in a city library that we are sustaining in the Slover, in the Downing, that's getting renovated, that's moving along nicely, to Broad Creek, to South Side, we're at a crossroads now where we're going from the old jewel box library to the community engagement space. That is where we have to focus in our programs moving forward as we look at our strategic planning. We have to be direct and understand that our programs to the city, community engagement, making a city of readers and have open access, community engagement is key. And what makes that successful is not just the bricks and mortar, but the people that are inside it. So when you're looking at your budget this year, I want you to pat yourselves on the back and understand that this nationally acclaimed library system, nationally sought after in both patrons and also leaders and also the place of work, is one that's made better by the people that are in there that provide a unique service, unique expertise, and a wonderful experience for a 94-year-old woman, to a 30-something man, to a nine-year-old little boy, that makes a memory that will last a lifetime. So think about that as you move forward and look in your budget and be proud that you are a part of such a wonderful legacy that's in Norfolk Public Libraries. I want to thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Edward Lazaran. I live at 1045 Cambridge Crescent. I'm a lifelong Norfolk citizen, have held a library card for over 60 years, and I'm here tonight as the chairman of the advocacy committee for the Friends of the Norfolk Public Library. We're a group committed to community support for the library for the last 65 years. We want to thank the city council for funding the Norfolk Public Library budget requests in this upcoming year. This commitment to the library system provides the 12 existing libraries and Bookmobile with operating funds, staff, and a wide array of resources to serve our community. In addition to the construction funds, we want to thank you for committing to the future of our libraries, for Broad Creek when it opens and South Side as it's developed. Providing comprehensive library services is one of the best investments the city can make in its economy and in its citizens. Our public libraries can contribute to the personal development, education, job training, entertainment, well-being, and engagement of every single citizen in this city. Your continued financial support means that the funds raised by my organization, the Friends of the Public Library, will provide the icing on the cake of basic library services and programming for the citizens. For example, Mayor Alexander, thank you for your keynote address at the first-ever opening ceremony for Norfolk Public Library's African-American History Month. This kicked off a month of exciting programs throughout the entire library system. Attendance at multicultural programs is up 7% last year and continues to grow as those programs expand. Special thanks to the superb efforts of that multicultural committee, including staff, volunteers, and Friends of the Library, who this year initiated the wildly successful Metallic Gala Fashion Show. Hopefully, this fundraiser for the Friends will become an annual event showcasing local design talent, entrepreneurs, and the beautiful Slover Library. Last month, the Friends' annual book review contest received applications. This encourages reading, writing, and critical thinking, as well as wider use of the library, by students from 20 public and private schools as well as home-school students. We recently received nearly 1,700 reviews for consideration this year. The award ceremony will be at 3:00 PM on Thursday, May 18th at Slover. We hope you'll join us. I also want to point out that summer is coming. Summer reading programs are being initiated throughout the library system. This is critical to our students because the learning gap between the end of the school year and the beginning of the next is filled by summer reading. The Friends are committed to supporting Norfolk Public Library because we understand how important libraries are to the economy, the well-being of our city. We say thanks once again and trust that you will continue to find the funds to keep the Norfolk Public Library at the forefront of community conversation and engagement for years to come. Thank you.
Tom Jones and Tom Lockman.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Tom Jones. I live at 1603 Boys Drive in Norfolk, Virginia. I am president of the Foundation for the Norfolk Public Library. And first thing I've got to do, I've got to correct a misspeak. Last year, I said the Bookmobile had the best air conditioning system that money could buy for the months of January, February, March. I was wrong. This February, we actually had to turn it on and the people unfortunately got hot, very, very hot. So I apologize for that. But speaking of the Bookmobile, I am proud to announce that we have finally sent it on its way or in the process. We've signed the contracts. Unfortunately, this, you all are trying, you've got a really rough job. You're trying to make a silk purse out of salzier. I know the budget's tight. I know that what you've got to spend is very tight, and so the foundation took it upon itself to fund the Bookmobile and refurbishment. Unfortunately, our foundation's not so strong that we could buy a new one, so we're going to remodel the one we have. You'll have a new carriage, we'll have new air conditioning systems, heating systems, also have new generators so that we can actually have more than one small computer on there. We'll have a couple. It's going to be very much a mini branch. It has over 10,000 books taken out on a yearly basis, and this is right in keeping with some of our smaller branches. But the main purpose of the Bookmobile is that it goes to areas underserved by this area, neighborhoods that children have to cross busy streets or busy byways to get to get books, our senior citizens who are in assisted living or in retirement homes that can't get out. The Bookmobile makes these visits. Again, unfortunately, this past year and then for the last couple of years, the Bookmobile has spent more time in the shop than it has been on the road or visiting these places. This hopefully will change as of come this spring, this summer, or let's call fall, you know how contracts go, when the Bookmobile is returned. But I do want to thank you for all your help with the library system. We have a wonderful system, is the great bridge across the divide. It helps those that need the facilities that the branches have, the computer technology. It allows people to go in and, you know, do resumes or find jobs or whatever, do research. And it also is helping our community become not only a city of readers, but also a city of leaders. And I want to thank you so much for all your help.
Mayor Alexander, members of council, City Manager. My name is Tom Lockman. I reside at 3192 Galahad Drive, Virginia Beach, and I am a proud 20-plus-year retiree from the city of Norfolk. I'm here this evening to speak of my concerns about the budget. I've been involved in recent attempts to discuss concerns that retirees as a group have. Tonight, I'd like to address what I would like to see as you enter your next three events in the budget. There are, there are issues with COLA. We understand. There was a perfect storm in 2008. We haven't recovered from that. Retirees on a whole are hurting because of that. We have some issues within the organization, and we try to point those out. We see another, I see another year of kicking the can down the road as not really a good idea. I think that when you deliberate in the budget, you might find a way to fund a study, have good people who know the business, a good consulting group come in and take a look at it and give you recommendations, tell you where you are. I think we've discussed over and again the fact that that talent doesn't reside normally within a city administration, and Norfolk's no different. It doesn't reside in the Retiree Association. They couldn't provide it. They can provide their concerns, but they can't give you how to get out of where we find ourselves. There's just under 4,000 retirees. There's over 4,000 active employees. There's a lot of people that need to have answers about their pension system. I would suggest that you take a strong look at how to get those answers. I believe you can do that. I think there's talent on council that will look at that, make the right decision, find somebody who is not looking out for their little rice bowl as anybody that's been... somebody who is not looking out for their little rice bowl as anybody that's been briefing you has, and get an honest approach. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, council members. My name is Jane Bethel, and I live at 1142 Little Bay Avenue in Willoughby Spit. I'm speaking to you tonight as president of the National Association of Government Employees Local 200, the General Employee Union. First of all, I thank you on behalf of the general employees for the 2% general wage increase. I know it is appreciated. Thank you also for increasing the wages of the refuse collectors, who really deserve the additional compensation. Thank you as well for the public safety increases. I know they appreciate the generous step increases and relief from the compensation issues. Now, the general employees would like their steps reinstated and their compression issues addressed as well. Last but not least, please fully fund the teachers and the schools. Value your people more than your projects. Hopefully, you are aware by this time that there are still very serious issues with the employees' paychecks. You should also know that some changes are being implemented to employ compensation mid-year, reducing their pay, and the employees are very unhappy about it. Primarily, I am speaking on behalf of the employees in wastewater. They have had their pay seriously cut because the city stopped paying premium pay for employees that are called out to clear damaged sewage lines after hours. Before the new pay system was put in place, for at least 20 years or more, these employees would get an additional $4.20 an hour for on-call after-hours work. These are the guys who stand knee-deep in human sewage to fix broken lines after hours on holidays and in some pretty nasty weather. One of them told me that sewage has splashed on his face and gotten in his mouth. These employees deserve premium pay for this type of work. I ask that premium pay be restored and paid retroactively since it was taken away this past December, when the new pay system was implemented. Finally, I want to address my next words to all current employees. Employees who desire a career in public service should strongly consider leaving Norfolk and going to any other city in Hampton Roads, because Norfolk's track record has shown that Norfolk is not concerned about workplace bullying, not concerned about discrimination, not concerned about treating employees fairly now, and especially as employees age and retire. Norfolk doesn't take care of retiree medical insurance like the other cities do, and once you become a retiree, you will not get cost of living increases like the other cities give to help retirees stay afloat with the ever-increasing cost to survive. But if you do choose to stay in Norfolk, then I highly recommend joining the union. Thank you.
Gerard... He must have left. Gerard Edens. All right. Jonathan Mills.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Smith. My name is Jonathan Mills. I reside at 5615 Flanders Road, Portsmouth, Virginia. I work for Waste Management. I'm an inspector with Waste Management. And I just wanted to say thank you for considering us for an increase. It's been some years. I've been with the city 10 years, and we've been through it all, through tragedy, resurface. We came back strong, and just really want to say thank you. One of the reasons why we began to lose a lot of personnel to other cities and companies because of lack of increase, and we just really appreciate considering us. And I'm an ordained minister, so I, you know... So one scripture that came to mind was 1 Corinthians 99. It says, "Muzzle not the ox that traded out the corn." And I just want to say thank you for doing that. Thank you.
My name is Gerald Edens. I live at 1508 East Baby Boulevard. Mayor Alexander, distinguished members of the council, city manager. As a refuse collector senior for the city of Norfolk, I'm proud to work for the city. As a parent of a special-needs, nine-year-old son, this pay increase will greatly impact our way of life and the families also with the rest of the refuse collectors, and I thank you for your consideration, and hopefully you'll pass it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, the mayor, vice mayor, city manager, and city council. My name is William Coram. I reside at 3142 Zagon Road. I'm an employee with the Department of Utilities, Waste Water Department, City of Norfolk, and I come to you with the discussion of our premium pay that was taken from us. Now, I've tried. No one can find out where the premium pay came from, why was it started, only that it has been taken. Now, I've been with the city for 17 years. The employees before me believed that it was to compensate us for when we received their call early in the wee hours of the morning. It don't just disrupt us, it's disrupt the whole household. It wakes up the whole family because you have to have something to wake you up from a deep sleep in order to respond to the citizens of Norfolk. And I think $4.20 is not a high-paced price to pay for 24-hour service, and it also disrupts our whole family. Because when that pager goes off and wakes me up, it wakes up everyone's family who'd have to respond to these calls. And Norfolk has 24-hour service, and when we get them calls, we respond. I have not been in contact with now-city residents who say they have called and haven't got a response. And $4.20 is not much to pay for 24-hour response and to compensate us for disruption of our household. And I've asked you to resubmit the premium pay back into our pay. First, we were told that the reason that the premium pay was taken because the new system wouldn't let them enter it. But if the system won't let you enter it, there are people who can change the system. So that was the reason they gave us, but I don't believe that was the real reason why it was taken. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. James Jackson and Nate Kinnison.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, members of council, city manager, Smith. My name is James Jackson. I reside at 3913 Larkin Street. I am a refuse collector, and on behalf of Waste Management, I'd like to thank you for your consideration for the increase in the budget. I work with a talented group of people, men, women. We safely and effectively clean the city. We keep Norfolk beautiful, and we'd like to thank you for your appreciation. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Nate Kinnison. I live at 1055 Hanover Avenue, Norfolk. Four generations of my family have gone through Norfolk Public Schools. I have five children of my own who will graduate from Norfolk Public Schools. My mom's a teacher. My dad is a career technical education teacher, 40 years. Taught at the Arts Academy in Salem High School. I am... My primary job is as an educator in Virginia Beach Elementary School, music. I've been there for 15 years. I've taught for the Governor's School. I've taught for Virginia Wesleyan. I've taught for Hampton City Schools. And I love living in Norfolk. Norfolk bets big on stuff. We have progressive neighborhood development. We have forward-thinking transportation development. We have commitment to future planning. We have infrastructure, commitment to resiliency. We bet big on things. But the one thing that we are missing in this budget is betting big on an investment in our human capital, and that's the students and the teachers here in Norfolk Public Schools. They represent an increase in earning potential when you spend more money on education in Norfolk. It represents an increase in employability and quality of life. It is a wise investment. It's a bold investment. You know, in the last 20 years, the average term of school board members has decreased from six years to four and a half years to two years in 2015. As appointed members, what appears to be kind of an attempt to keep the budget number delivered to council sort of low. And here we are now with this baseline budget, and we're talking about school consolidation and cutting administration. I was very involved in the race of school board in the last cycle, and I know that Norfolk represents the lowest percentage of administration out of all of the seven cities in Hampton Roads. So the narrative of cutting and consolidation and cutting administration is a false narrative. And the people who really know education and know what the research says about it know that the budget number we're starting with right now is already far too low. You know, it's easy to look out in an audience like this and see that people don't show up in the hundreds, but they do show up on Election Day, and the numbers show that there are engaged people that believe in the promises and believe in the narrative that goes on in campaigning. And as such, we really need, as a public, to be represented by members who are willing to close that gap in the educational budget. I think it's a conversation for next year to look at really rightsizing this budget, but I think for this year's amount, we need to absolutely close the gap. $10 million is not a lot to ask in a budget where the operating budget is in the range of about $1.2 billion. $10 million, we can find that. Thank you.
Michelle Clark and Emma Foster.
Hello, Mayor, city councilman, and city manager. My name is Michelle Clark, and my oldest son graduated from Maury a few years ago, and my youngest son has decided he does want to speak, and he does attend a Norfolk Public School. So I'm going to yield the floor to him.
Good evening, city council. My name is Unna Clark Kirley. I wouldn't be where I am if I didn't... I wasn't able to attend resources. I wouldn't be able to draw cool posters like this one if I wasn't able to attend art and music. If I wasn't able to attend art and music, I wouldn't be able to achieve life goals. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Emma Foster, and I reside at 6030 Newport Avenue. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Like I said, my name is Emma Foster, and I'm a junior attending Grandby High School. I'm here tonight to have the chance to voice my own opinions, which I know represents the thoughts and opinions of many of my peers, when I ask you all to consider the arts. I'm currently a chorus and music student for two of my classes here at Grandby High School, and in the past, I've taken photography and theater as well. However, Grandby doesn't even have the funds to have a theater program anymore. No theater classes are offered, and a once-flourishing community in which theater positively affected many students is now nonexistent since 2014 through 2015 school year. The students I worked with in acting class my freshman year are now frustrated as to why they couldn't have continued. In chorus, we are struggling to fundraise in order to buy dresses for our hard-working singers, and people in other classes in the arts experience the same problem time and time again. There's simply not enough money in the budget. The arts are an important part of my life. My father plays trombone in the United States Air Force. My mother performs the Virginia Opera, and my stepdad teaches theater production classes. So yes, I'm very passionate when it comes to the arts and how important they are. They allow every average person in high school, middle school, elementary school to allow expression and meaning to come into an already difficult part of their lives. I've grown up with the arts literally surrounding me. However, not every student has parents who are musicians. They should be able to have the same opportunity to experience arts to their fullest. In order to do that, we need money to do so. The schools and NPS need more funding, and while that's easier said than done, when there's a will, there's a way. That's what I always like to say. And so I beg of you to all consider that there is a will. There is a will in the students and staff in Norfolk Public Schools. They work hard to bring the arts into our lives and the lives of students, and I ask that you all think about the arts as you make the decisions that affect the rest of us. Thank you.
So thank you for coming. The meeting is adjourned.